I'm going to call this meeting to order then. Welcome to this afternoon's meeting, everybody. Before we begin, I would like to take a few moments to honor two people who made great contributions to WCC. William J. Davis Jr. and Dennis Billa. For over a decade, Mr. William J. Davis Jr. provided leadership and a firm commitment to lifelong learning at Washtenaw Community College. He was elected to the WCC Board of Trustees in 1992 and served as a treasurer and vice chair for two, two-year appointments during his six-year term. He was appointed by the board to the Washtenaw Technical Middle College Board of Directors in 1999 and served as chair. He joined the WCC Foundation Board in 1998, where he served as chair of its corporate committee and established the Arbor Springs Scholarship. Mr. Dennis Billa started at the college in 1969 and during his tenure, served with distinction as both a union leader and faculty member. Dennis was a longstanding member of the Washtenaw Community College Education Association and for several years, served as its president. In addition to his faculty position, he also served as chair of the math department. After his retirement, he continued working with the college as a part-time math instructor. In 1999, Dennis was given the college's Morris J. Lawrence Award. Please join me in a moment of silence from former trustee, Mr. William Davis and faculty member, Mr. Dennis Billa. Thank you, everybody, for that moment. Let's begin the meeting. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming here.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken here.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis here.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty here.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher here.
Trustee Landau?
Landau here.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Support, Milliken?
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda before we begin? Okay, hearing none, Vanessa? I'm sorry, what was that?
This is McKnight Morton. Is it appropriate for me to talk about the person who has, two people who have deceased or wait till comments?
Comments.
I would appreciate it if you'd wait till comments.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Moving to tab A, the minutes. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the May 19 monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion for the minutes?
So move.
Hatcher, second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Excuse me. Moving on to citizen participation. First up is our verbal communication. Ms. Kissel, are you ready?
I think so. I think they're going to send my video.
Go ahead when you're ready. Yep.
All right, there we go. All right, there I am. All right, well, it's June 2020. In the month since the last board meeting, months has happened. And working with the VPI and Executive Director DeLong, the WCCA has signed a number of letters of agreement in preparation for the fall semester. Among them, we have agreed to shift the timeline for completely professional development and capitalize on the summer training many of us plan to do. We've extended continuing adjunct status for the 2020, 2021 school year so that no current adjunct loses their status due to changes related to the pandemic. And we've allowed for adjuncts to teach up to 10 credit hours, giving departments more flexibility in scheduling. And so this can only be done through our regular conversations with President Blanca, VPI Hearns, and others, as we consider how best to meet the students' needs. Also, the WCCA is pleased to announce that we are encouraging donations to the foundation through the WCCEA Faculty Union Cares Student Emergency Fund. Like the General Emergency Fund, these money will support our students in their times of need. And happily, this fund is growing through one-time donations and payroll deduction. Of course, all are welcome to give to this fund, and I thank the WCCEA Board and the members for their ongoing support. This month has also reminded us of the injustice and inequality in this country as we witnessed the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis and the subsequent protests locally and abroad. As noted by the MEA President, the WCCEA knows that our members, our institution, has a critical role to play in the education and the fostering of solutions. But I don't want these to just be empty words to this school. As my members have reached out over to me this past month, they want to know how to make an impact, how to feel safe in promoting difficult conversations, and how to engage in the struggle in meaningful ways. I will continue to discuss this with President Blanca and VPI Hearns as the start of a new school year, an election year, provides us with such opportunity. Therefore, I was very pleased to see that President Blanca has joined with other colleges' presidents and chancellors for the All-In Campus Democracy Challenge. I look forward to learning more about how we can leverage this initiative on our campus. And of course, sadly, one voice in this conversation that will be missed is that of Dennis Billa, who passed away on June 9. I never got to know Dennis well, but I hear him every time I open my contract. I've heard from many over these past weeks who've had a much greater sense of the man, and their stories show a person who had such great conviction, humility, tenacity, love, and humor. And as one faculty member noted, while not a man of great stature, he was indeed a giant. So on behalf of the WCCEA, we would like to extend our deepest condolences to his family and friends, and we will work to carry on his legacy of empowering others to make an impact on the world. Dennis made an impact on WCC, and for that, we will forever be grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kissel. Public comments? Vanessa, were there any public comments received?
I know there was no public comments.
Any written communications?
There was one received.
Okay, thank you. And you sent that on to us, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving on to special reports. First up is the NASA Community College Aerospace Scholars. VP Hearns, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
So we're going to watch a video, and before we watch that video, I just want to introduce two wonderful students, both Emily and Maximilian are students who were chosen among 273 students who applied to join the NASA Community College Aerospace Scholars Program. Emily is a 19-year-old. She recently completed her pre-engineering science transfer associate's degree. She was a past president of the WCC Outspace Club and was deeply involved on campus in multiple other student clubs and organizations as a chemistry peer tutor and working in the college's writing center. Maximilian, along with taking a full schedule at WCC classes this upcoming fall 2020 semester, he will be also one of the scholars. He actually came to us from the University of Michigan, where he was studying nursing and decided to shift gears. He's a 19-year-old Ypsilanti resident and is a second WCC student, of course, to get this award. I think the other thing that I would like to note and kind of goes along with the earlier statement from Dr. Kissel is that the faculty members who have just opened their arms to these students and helped them in a lot of ways, I'd love to call their names. Susan Dentel, Danette Bull, Robert Haygood, Daniel Majes, Amir Faiyaz, and Sue Albach. It was really nice to see the emails come in from the students thanking all of the faculty. These faculty have worked together to really encourage and promote, motivate these students in a way I think is specific to how we do things at Washtenaw Community College. And finally, I'll just also note that the faculty in the math, science, and engineering division have also made a $500 donation to keep alive the work that Ayesha Bowe, one of our alumni who you'll see in the video, has started when she was here for STEAM Week. So without further ado, here's the video.
In late May, our story about Emily Seghi was a big hit on social media. Emily is a recent WCC graduate transferring to the University of Michigan to study aerospace engineering, who learned she was accepted into the NASA Community College Aerospace Scholar Program. That story caught the attention of Ayesha Bowe. Ayesha is a WCC graduate who transferred to the University of Michigan to study aerospace engineering and worked for NASA for seven years before starting her own tech company. We got them together.
Yeah, so as soon as I saw the comment, more or less, I wrote an email to Ayesha just explaining that she has been such a big inspiration and I'm entering on this similar path to NASA. And, you know, the phone call was like, I was a bit starstruck, not going to lie, in like more ways than one because it's space, you know? And she gave me some really valuable insight, being someone who has really forged this path for students like me.
Ayesha is a strong WCC supporter who has returned to campus to participate in STEAM Week activities and last year endowed a scholarship through the WCC Foundation.
And so when I saw the post, I literally screamed. I was so excited, Emily, I'm so excited for you, I'm excited for the school, I'm excited for the work that you're going to do, I'm excited for the journey that you're going to have, because working at NASA and being part of that, I mean, that environment is an absolutely life-changing and incredible experience, and I couldn't help but share that.
Throughout her time at WCC, Emily carried the academic planner she posed with for our story. We asked her what it signifies.
You know, the WCC sticker on my planner, you know, reminds me of where I'm coming from, this amazing support network that I have, and all of these people that I know and love. And the NASA sticker, really, it represents more than just NASA, but it is some of that self-belief, like just daring to dream about being at such, being part of such an important mission for humankind someday.
Both challenged the stigma that community college students are behind their four-year university counterparts. In fact, they credit WCC for helping them reach their goals.
My Washtenaw Community College classes, which were affordable and fantastic and supportive, transferred to University of Michigan. So how can you beat that? How can you be taking a class that's on par with the classes that are offered from a top tier university at a fraction of the cost in a small environment and doing well in it?
In a lot of ways, I feel like coming to WCC before going to U of M was the best thing I could have done for my education and my personal development. The friends you make and the mentors you meet, they are just such a key support system in your academics as well. And a lot of the professors at Washtenaw, in fact, I would say all of them, really, they are your cheerleaders, they want to see you win, they want to hear about your aspirations, why you came to WCC, where you want to go, and they want to do everything that they can to get you from point A to point B.
I've turned into a community college evangelist. At this point in time, I want more people to understand how powerful it is and to know that, you know, going from high school to community college, getting a solid foundation, and then picking, I mean, literally picking where you want to go and your level comfort with that and saving money, which is always a smart move, is the best thing you can do to set yourself up early on in your academic career.
Before ending the call, we shared some more good news.
Apparently, we're starting a queue of success stories to share because literally hours ago, I learned that we have another student chosen for the NASA Community College Aerospace Scholar Program that begins in September.
So we have, we're going to have a club, Rich?
We're going to have a club. I didn't have the opportunity to turn that around quickly enough and have him join us, but people can watch our news page, wccnet.edu/news, and you'll learn a little more about him very soon. So, but thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you.
Did you have more comments on this VP Hearns? No? Okay, thank you. That was a great video. Thank you. Next up is Report B, the mandatory audit communication. VP Johnson, are you ready?
I am, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yep, it is that time of year again, where we are starting to plan out our external audit for fiscal '20. And with us today is Tom Winkelman. He's the principal at Raymond. And Tom is going to go through for the board the mandatory communication and outline the planning and execution schedule for our audit. So, Tom, are you ready?
I am ready, yeah. It's a really inspiring video to follow. I know Emily and Maximilian are going on to do great things, and I'll try my best here to segue into the audit work. But as Bill said, it is that time of year, the fiscal year is winding down at June 30, and we're going to commence that audit. So right now, we're in the planning stages of that audit. You might recognize me, this is my second year in this role as engagement partner here. The last time you saw me was delivering the final audit report in the fall, at the end of our work. So here we are, kicking off the audit, and we'll mainly do that starting here in June, July, and again later in the fall before we report back to you at that time. Just a couple of things as reminders. I am an external auditor and I report to you, the board. The board is really the oversight for the college, and I'm working for you and I will report to you, and that is my role. As an auditor, you know, we'll conduct our audit in accordance with the professional standards, and we're prepared and ready to do that. A couple of things that we do as part of the audit, we audit the college itself as an entity. That should go as expected. We also do a separate audit of federal award money that flows through the college. That's primarily student financial aid, Pell Grants, and the like that flow through the college. One interesting thing this year that we're still getting new information on is some of the federal money that's come out of the pandemic, you know, the CARES Act and some other money that is flowing down from the federal government to the college. The guidance on that is still coming out on what we may or may not have to do in regard to that, but if we do get instructions like that, we'll incorporate that into our audit as required. I kind of laid out in general our timeline, so we'll conduct the audit generally over the summer after the fiscal year ends, and then come back at the end and describe the results and, of course, communicate with the board if needed along the way, but we'd expect to hold that traditional timeline. A lot of people have been asking, well, how are we going to conduct an audit in this pandemic-type environment? And the good news is that CPA firms like ourselves, Raymond, you know, we're very equipped and have been quite equipped for quite a while, you know, many years working with technology to supplement our efforts to communicate with management. And we have a history of working with the WCC management as needed and being flexible with technology. So I don't expect any disruption, really any changes, where, you know, we'll be able to handle this no problem. Of course, we'd like to see everyone in person as much as possible, as I'm sure each of you would too, but we're ready to adapt to the environment and the conditions that we have. The document you see on the screen, you should have in your packet, I believe that you do, there's an engagement letter, which is the formal agreement, if you will, which describes my role as an auditor and describes management's role, and that's for your reference. The other document that's sort of associated with that is our professional services plan, and that just lays out the timeline in a little bit more detail than I just verbally described. So if you have any questions on that along the way, my contact information is available. I'm sure many of you might have that anyway. I look forward to serving the college again in this capacity and working with the board here, and I look forward to hopefully seeing you in person soon. Any questions?
Any questions from the board or VP Johnson? Did you want to add anything here?
Just that we are, even though we've been remote, our year-end close process is not changing. We've already batted that down. We have three internal closes that we do before we turn over the final year-end results to Raymond, and we fully anticipate being back to the board with a draft audit of financials at the September board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Ruth.
Mr. Winkelman, how many times have you conducted the WCC audit?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Trustee Hatcher. This is my second time here as engagement principal. You might not recognize me with my pandemic beard, I should have shaved it, but this is my second time in this capacity here with the college.
When did you do it before?
Last year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board on the audit? Okay, thank you. Moving on to our next special report on the Police Academy update. President Blanca, did you have some words of introduction here? I'm not hearing you, President Blanca. Did you have something to say here?
There we go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm muted. I believe it's important for us to begin this conversation with a statement about our philosophy, and I wanted to share that before we have this conversation, because I think it's really imperative and important. Today, as you may know, is the 51st anniversary of Martin Luther King's Peaceful March in Detroit, the Great Freedom Rally. And we're, and that has had such an impact on our state and, of course, Martin Luther King on our entire country. And hearing that speech again this week, it makes us think about our college and what's going on in the area around us. So as a college, we're saddened, and I personally am saddened and angered by the wrongful deaths of George Floyd, Rihanna Taylor, Armand Arbery, and the many more victims of racial injustice. As a college, we condemn these senseless acts of violence and join all those who demand justice. Racism is a powerful and insidious force in America that has created deep divides among people. And at WCC, we continue to believe that systemic change is necessary to end racism. We welcome our responsibility as educators to accelerate that change for our students, our staff, our faculty, and our college community. We are committed to do more, to make WCC a better place for everyone to learn and to work as a collective family with a passion and a focus on student, employee, and community success through equity and inclusion awareness, training, policies, and practices. After the departure of Dean Clarence Jennings, programming still continued. And I want to thank Caleb Khalib Boswell for keeping our brother-to-brother group thriving. And I'd also like to thank VPI Hearns for continuing to meet with the diversity committee in Clarence's absence. As you may be aware, we posted and even interviewed candidates for the Dean of Student Access, Success, Equity, and Inclusion. And from that, we realized that, and we knew we had a gem when we had Clarence, but from that, we realized that Dean Jennings possessed a unique skill set that isn't easily replicated. In the midst of reevaluating the scope of the dean position to attract the most qualified candidates, COVID-19 happened. So we did have some candidates, they didn't meet what we were looking for, so we are reposting that position. But I've asked AVP Tucker, because we need to move to action right now. I've asked AVP Tucker, in addition to his current responsibilities, to work alongside of me as an interim chief diversity officer in a role to help us chart our path forward on diversity and inclusion initiatives across our college campus. In addition, we will soon post that position of student access, success, equity, and inclusion. I want our faculty, staff, and students to know and to feel like their voice is heard and valued in a very safe space. We are working to do so. Brandon and I are working on scheduling campus conversations for faculty, staff, and forum for students to hear these conversations, to hear their concerns, to just understand their issues, and to provide a response that would meet their needs. Beginning next week, we are hosting webinars on race and ethnic studies. And this was actually a suggestion from students that they thought we should, you know, offer it through our academic programming. Well, we kind of are, but what we decided to do is we are offering these free webinars to our community. They'll be free and open, there's five of them scheduled, and we do have a part-time faculty member who will be offering these sessions. And Brandon and Michelle Mueller are working on scheduling these seminars. You know, the COVID-19 pandemic showed us a lot. It laid bare what too many students, faculty, and students of color have always known. And you know what? Many of us have always known this too, that this country still has not delivered equality, justice, or opportunity for all. As a college, we are committed to redouble our efforts and to end discrimination. As a college, we are committed to redouble our efforts and to end discrimination and injustice and to eradicate bias, prejudice, and privilege as we do our part to eliminate the barriers to an affordable education for all. We do this work because we believe that, we believe that not only are we individually and together responsible, but we are better off when we can learn, grow, and achieve. But because we also collectively as a nation are better off when every person can access a quality education that opens the doors to an American dream. And we're doing things right now to take a look at that digital divide. It's just so incumbent upon us, and we are looking at ways to provide better access for our students in that area. The two reasons, well, one trustee requested this presentation tonight, but it was a good suggestion because I think it's very good for us to reinforce to our community and by our community, I mean our campus community as well as our community, that we take these things seriously and demonstrate how we are doing the things that we do all along. And so when we talk about our campus safety department, I remember all the discussions we had. I have notes on all your concerns. Linda Blakey has those, and we act very responsibly to address those. And it's good for you to hear the progress that we've made and any suggestions you may have. But we also have a very prominent Police Academy where we are training the future police officers for this county and for this region, which is why Brandon Tucker is going to present about, you know, what we do in the Police Academy to address issues. So the presentation today will begin with Brandon Tucker talking about our Police Academy, and then Linda Blakey will discuss our campus security. So, you know, we report to the board often about minority status in hiring. We reported to the board, especially when Clarence was here, so I'm really looking forward to that job again, of looking at those datas, you know, what gets measured gets done. And so we looked at how are we working with the different groups, the diverse groups? And we're continuing to do that, but we have to pick that up again, you know, in a way that we can, but we haven't dropped it, but it just was better when we had someone overlooking it. So we're very, very serious, and I've learned a great deal from things that Kim has shared with me, Brandon has shared with me, and some of the things that, you know, I really am not aware of. I am, you know, somewhat aware, and I'm concerned to hear about the fears that our own staff have about coming to work, about their ride to work, about what they experience every day perhaps in their job, maybe things that we say even unintentionally, that's not the right thing to say in any way that we can ensure that this is a good place for all of us to work. So that is a real critical piece that we need to do. And learn more about our students. And at first, you know, we may think that it's issues about, yeah, and it's important to hear how they feel that they're treated unfairly. But I can't even imagine what it would be like. Yeah, I could, and I don't want to imagine, because it upsets me to imagine it. I can't imagine what it'd be like to be the mother of a black child that goes out to work every day, drives down these streets, and has the fear that they may be pulled over or may be treated unjustly. Or our employees that might have children in that capacity. So we all want to learn, we want to understand through these campus conversations, and we want to do something about it. So I thought this would be the best way for me to introduce our academies. Brandon, would you like to talk about our Police Academy?
Yes, thank you, President Blanca, and good afternoon, Board of Trustees. It's my honor, pleasure to give you an update today of our Police Academy. And my goal is to provide you kind of the soup to nuts for how students get into the academy, to how they actually leave prepared, ready to be positive contributors in our local law enforcement agencies. And, okay, so what you'll see here is our Police Academy is authorized by MCOS, the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards. And MCOS provides the administrative oversight and authority for not only police academies, but for all police agencies and law enforcement agencies in the state. MCOS is made up of a commission of 19 individuals that represent law enforcement community and community as large that sit in Lansing and really drive the policies and procedures that we as an academy and agencies have to operate under. Students who enter the academy can come in one of two ways. Either as a pre-service candidate, in which they are paying their own tuition, they're eligible for financial aid, and they eventually will seek employment, or in-service candidates, in which an agency such as the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office or Ann Arbor Police Department will sponsor that candidate, thus paying them a wage and paying their full tuition. We have seen over the last few years, under the great leadership of Joyce Van Meter and our team, that we have had a large increase in in-service candidates. We used to have one or two, now we have record numbers of 10 or 11 out of an academy class of 25 to 30. So in some instances, almost half from the local agencies are saying, we want to invest in Washtenaw Community Colleges training efforts. Everyone in the Police Academy must meet what is minimum licensing standards. There's a Public Act 289 of 2016 that allows for agencies, let's give an example of maybe Detroit Police Department or Ypsilanti Police Department, that they can waive the educational requirement and hire someone directly. As you'll see in our next slide, in order to get into the academy from an educational standpoint, you have to have a minimum of an associate's degree upon completion of the academy. With the exception, as I just mentioned, agencies that can provide an exception to that rule, and that does happen, not as often as one would think, but sometimes individuals from a military background, they may waive that educational requirement. But otherwise, you have to have an associate's degree, you have to be no younger than 18, a US citizen, and then you must have character fitness, thus meaning good moral character, which is determined by an extensive background check that happens through a number of things which you'll hear about today. There are some prohibited criminal offenses that sometimes we get the question of, if I've done X, can I still be eligible to be a law enforcement officer? As you'll see here on your screen, of course, felony conviction, if they've ever, you know, had some level of imprisonment for more than one year, if they've had a DUI or OVI. And you'll see here, second offense, the MCOS standards does allow for redemption, but it does look at, it has to be, of course, a long time ago. So if someone was 19, made a mistake, and they decided to be a cop at 30, as long as it's not a recent offense specifically around, you know, a DUI, then they potentially might be eligible. But then, of course, drugs. We know that cops on the street oftentimes may be exposed to drugs, not so much marijuana anymore because we know the laws have changed. But if they've had, you know, drug issues, domestic violence, things of those natures, those are prohibitive. And I want to mention that we are authorized by MCOS to have what we call a regional academy. MCOS determines at the end of the day whether or not a candidate is eligible to enter. So we don't have that determination while we have input regarding character and what we may gain from interviews. Those major issues all have to be cleared by MCOS. In addition to, of course, them being able to pass, you know, a physical ability test, there's a medical exam, and there are reading and writing exams that they have to pass. And of course, there's fingerprints for the background check. That background check, once again, is not administered through us, but is administered, of course, in conjunction with MCOS. As I mentioned, there are 20 regional, 20 police academies in the state. 12 are regional, including WCC. Three are what we consider agency academies. Detroit Police actually has their own academy. Michigan State Police, of course, runs their own academy, and DNR, the Department of Natural Resources. But then there are five academies that are what we consider track programs. Those are part of an existing bachelor's degree program. So they're a state, the Forrester Michigan College. But in total, there are 20 academies. As I mentioned, MCOS provides oversight. We're required to submit an annual operating plan, which details down to the minute of what we will be doing throughout our academy, where we'll be conducting our activities. And because we are a regional academy, we have to gain letters of support from our local agency, whether that be the sheriff, whether that be Ipsy, or Pittsfield Township. But there is a field representative, Matt Logie, who is amazing, law enforcement leader. He's our side rep, and he oversees essentially Washtenaw and about six other academies. He's on-site, performs audits during each session, and then leads a confidential closeout in which there's interviews that happen with both participants, staff, and instructors to get their feedback, or not how only we can improve the academy, but if there's issues that arise. Essentially, an individual will enter the academy by saying, hey, I'm interested. They then have to submit a large amount of documentation and consent to a background. Once they've submitted that information, we then provide an initial interview, which we've changed our practice in the last four years, where it's now a panel interview made up of local chiefs. So they begin to get the experience of what it's like to go before the interview board. If they do well with that interview process, they will be then passed at the next stage, which they have to go through their medical and psychological evaluation. What you might be hearing in the media right now is there are certain agencies, and there are certain states in which a psychological evaluation is not mandatory. Michigan is one of the most restrictive states in the fact that they have MCOS. A lot of other states have no oversight, even the example of Ohio, as closely as to Michigan. Its level of entry into their academy and their essentially law enforcement doesn't require a degree, doesn't require a psychological eval. But we do that, of course, here in Michigan. Should they pass all of that, then they get a finalized offer. I will tell you, and a question may come up today is, well, how many people are ready for our next academy? Our next academy starts July 20th, and we actually have a record number, 42 are currently in queue for the process, which shows that even in the midst of a pandemic and in the midst of what we see going on, there are still people who are saying, I want to be a contributor to the good and not the bad. Our curriculum, MCOS mandates 594 hours of instruction. Each academy can provide more, and every one, all 20 of our academies do. And those additional numbers are based upon what the local area determines as a need. And as you'll see in the next few slides, our local area has some specialized things that they said, we want to focus on this. So we offer a total of 805 hours of instruction, which amounts to an additional 211 hours. And they are fully, those additional hours are movable. So if we see a need like we're seeing right now, we pivot and we add some things to make sure that it's relevant to our local area. As you'll see on your screen, the blue is essentially what MCOS requires. And there are a number of areas, investigation, patrol procedures, police skills, traffic. And as you'll notice, on mostly every area, we provide over and above what is required. That's mainly because our advisory board, made up of all those local chiefs and the sheriff, have said in Washtenaw County and this region, we want to focus on A, B, and C. And of course, you know, this is a difficult slide to see, and we can, of course, provide this if you want it, but you'll see, I think, on the next slide, it breaks out those areas. And our 800-level courses, which are the additional courses beyond what MCOS requires, specific to our academy, we focus on things like cell phone technology, things like officer psychological wellness and officer self-care, knowing that the stress of the job oftentimes is what contributes to some of the issues. So we make sure that our recruits, who eventually become law enforcement professionals, know how to take care of themselves so that they are not getting burnt out and then leading to making bad decisions. But then we also focus on, you know, things of like officer-involved shootings. And one thing that we pride ourselves in recent years is that we've adapted a large increase to scenario-based training. So students are not just going in lecture and then being asked to take a test and see if they retain the information. They do that, yes, but they're also having to role-play that and use scenarios to reinforce what they learned in the classroom. It's important to note that our curriculum overlaps a lot of our areas of study. So for example, when we talk about bias, we interweave bias into a multitude of our areas. So bias in ethics and policing, bias in crimes against persons, bias in fear and impartial policing, for example, to ensure that they're able to take those themes and those tenets across the curriculum. One of the issues that we're seeing in America right now is use of excessive force. And in the law enforcement arena, we relate that to what's called subject control. We teach our recruits to use the minimum force necessary to effectively arrest an individual. And of course, we, as you'll see on your screen, we, at every piece of our curriculum and every scenario, all of our recruits are paired up with not just one, but multiple instructors to ensure that not only that they get it in their mind, but that they actually can apply it all the way down to their form and their function. There is a continuum, as you'll see with MCOS, that looks at subject control. And of course, it is the least level all the way to the highest level. And we try to, of course, show how you elevate up each level in the most responsible way. And this is not something that we're just drawing attention to today because of what's going on. It's something that, over the last three or four years, as we have retooled our academy, we've begun focusing more deeply on this. You'll notice here, this is another example of our subject control, that's our Matt Room and Morris Lawrence. We consistently try to reinforce good behavior. good behavior across every piece of our academy. We do use pepper spray, uh, and pepper spray and tasers are in the MCOS subject control curriculum. Uh, but we do not teach chaser training because that is generally reserved for local agencies, uh, in which, once you get to an agency, they teach you on the type of taser that they may have, uh, in use. But as you'll notice, uh, we do have, uh, pepper spray, and there is a number of scenarios, minimum of three, that students have to go through in order to show competency. What most people don't realize is that when an officer discharges, whether it be pepper spray or another type of chemical, they oftentimes get that in their own eyes. So what we show our recruits is how do you effectively still have contact with the subject when you are having to operate with a distress like pepper spray? Uh, but this is actually one of the, the, uh, the funnest exercises for our recruits. They hate it, but they love it at the same time. We are closely monitoring, uh, all of the things that are going on. And the great thing about our academy is that we have around ninety-six instructors that teach across the curriculum. Uh, some may teach two hours here and four hours there. But they're made up of local law enforcement who are currently on the job, doing the right thing. And so as we look at adapting some changes in our curriculum, um, they're real time. Some of us may have seen in the media, uh, President Trump has released an executive order around state policing. And it has a number of elements, some that are very germane to our police academy, specifically mental health response, and we're already teaching that. Uh, legislation and grant programs, which will probably, uh, release a number of dollars that we might be able to go after to not only develop our academy, but remember, our public service training department is the regional training academy for most, uh, all, uh, agencies that are in the area. So whether it's U of M, whether it's Pittsfield, uh, whether it's the lead, or even our own public safety service training department, our public safety department, we provide that regional training. But then also, we know that that executive order bans chokeholds. I would tell you that chokeholds, uh, is not a technique that is taught in our academy, um, has not been and will not be. Uh, as we know that there's now a national ban, it's not a best practice, and we don't use it. Some things that are currently in place, we, of course, have to adhere to MCOS standards. But we are actually working on our IDAT list accreditation, International Association of Law Enforcement Standards and Training. Uh, where we, um, sometime, probably in the next quarter, uh, will submit ourselves study to become the first police academy in the United States to achieve accreditation. And of course, that, those standards are even more stringent than MCOS. And what we have found as an initial test, uh, we are meeting a lot of the standards that are out there. So, uh, we'll be excited to be able to submit that self-study and have our onsite visit sometime by the end of the calendar year 2020. But we are constantly looking at our training. And one thing that we have come up with is that we're going to have a panel discussion. Uh, we teach how to not use excessive force. But what we never do is have a panel discussion with local law enforcement, as well as maybe some community members that can speak to their own experience and how it has been. So in addition to teaching it, we're going to provide some discussion in this upcoming academy. We will continue with our scenario-based training to include subject control. Uh, while we do it in our mat room, as we showed you a couple of slides ago, uh, we're going to infuse this to have scenarios in which use of excessive force is present and to be able to showcase what it is like to be in a situation like that and why we should not do it. We also have, i- i- in partnership with the University of Michigan, uh, Ann Arbor Police and the Sheriff's Department have a Milo system, uh, which we've used for the last three years that has been on campus, and we will continue to use, uh, even greater now, which is a effective escalation, de-escalation scenarios in which you can actually go in a room and it will show you what it is like to be in the parking structure with five people coming at you as an officer. But then we're also going to look to see if there's more that we need to do. As we have our advisory board meetings and, and we could hear from our local law enforcement agencies that are on the front line, what are the, the burning problems? And because we are a regional academy, we're able to respond to those and be able to trade our officers the right way. Uh, some might ask, do we use body cams? Uh, in twenty seventeen, uh, we invested in GoPro cameras that are actually affixed to the recruit. And they're versatile, they allow for us to be able to go back and show a recruit, look what you just did, whether it was a great job and keep it up, or let's change your form and let's change your technique. We use those not only on one-on-one scenarios, but even around vehicle stops, uh, how you can assure that what we call the mechanics of arrest are being followed, as well as subject control. And some might say, why, why WCC, right? Uh, our, our, our mantra and our motto is that we care and strive for excellence. But that we focus on scenario-based training and ensure that our recruits make solid and wise decisions, not because we told them to, but because they have seen what best practices show that you should do. But then we have, you know, the most modern training equipment, whether it be, as you see on your screen, our inflatable wall system that literally can showcase a commercial building or a house in about three or four minutes of blowing it up. But then also our police vehicles, that we continue to make sure that we have the latest and the greatest in terms of tools, whether it be our vehicles, the fingerprint, state-of-the-art fingerprint kit that you see, or even our range, which you know, we've invested a significant amount of money to make it state-of-the-art. But then, as I mentioned before, our Milo system, uh, which, we were lucky, this is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar system that we did not have to pay for, based upon our partnership with Ann Arbor PD, the Sheriff's Office, and U of M. They located on our campus, we already trained their, their officers, but that we also have access to that for free. Then, of course, as you see scenarios, um, we believe in showing, not just telling. And if we teach, they should be able to apply. Our point of pride is that we have been around since nineteen eighty-seven. And, um, since we started that academy, we have had eighty-five percent of our graduates obtain employment, so we have a very high employment rate. That does not take into account the other fifteen percent, probably individuals that either obtained employment federally or out of state, which we're not able to track. And then, last but not least, is our talent, is our part-time faculty and our administrative staff. As you'll see, uh, we have a large variety. Majority of those instructors, about half, come from the county. But we have a number of other counties that come and they show and they teach. And what does that do? That ensures that we have diversity, not only in race, but not only in, in, in background or agency structure, because I'll tell you that someone teaching from Monroe, their agency is going to look a lot different than Ann Arbor PD, or particularly Farmington Hills. So we want to ensure that we have diversity, uh, of experience. And, um, with that, our motto, I'll leave you with this, that we care and we strive for excellence. Uh, I'll tell you that, having been around our academy, uh, we have some of the best and the brightest, not only recruits that come out ready, day one, but also our faculty that teach. Uh, and, you know, a number of our students come directly from our associate's degree in criminal justice program here at the college. So, you know, it's oftentimes a continuum where we get them, they come ready to be a cop, they go through the CJ program, and then they enter the academy, or those who come already with a degree and they're looking to get those skills. So, uh, with that, uh, I'll, I guess I'll open it up for any questions, or maybe I can answer those at the end, up to President Malaka and Chair Fleming.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Chair, if I could just interject one thing before we ask, answer any questions. So when I first came here, I met with, uh, the chiefs, and they were very, very disappointed in our program and very upset. And, um, and I listened to this for a couple of years. And when Brandon took it over, I think about five years ago, was it five, Brandon?
Yep.
I, I gave him the job of making sure we made him, you know, we figured this out because they were upset that they were sending, they had to go to Schoolcraft Community College or other colleges to train for police officers. And so Brandon has worked very closely with the police advisory board and has implemented this program. So Brandon, I would like to thank you for what you have done over the years. And I was part of the beginning, so I know where it was and I know where it is. So Brandon, thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you, President. No, thank you, President Malaka, and really, that, that, I, I want to thank our team, Joyce Van Meter and, and, and Sherry and Tom, uh, and John, they, they, they have really helped. And it's a community effort.
I have something to say.
Go ahead.
Feedback issue. Okay, are we good? All right, hang on. Since the five years, um, this is for AVP Tucker, since the five years that you've taken over, um, what sort of percentage rate were we at, at that time to where we are here? You know, like, were, were we fifty percent in graduation rate, now we're eighty-five? You know, what, what sort of a significant, um, impact in that percentage of graduation rate have we had since you took over?
We have, um, always graduated individuals, Trustee Davis. The question becomes whether or not they became certified by MCOS and took the test. Uh, I will tell you that in the five years, or almost six now, uh, we are usually maybe one or two failures um, out of the entire class, and, and that could be a first-term failure, and then they go back in a week or two and retest. Uh, I will tell you that when I started, it probably was more upwards of five or six. And, uh, what we have done is we've really looked at our test bait questions and how we prepare those individuals for the test. And, you know, we do a lot of, uh, outside of the classroom coaching and review to ensure that those individuals are, are ready for that, that final test through MCOS. Because while they may graduate and complete the academy, there is a, a certification licensure exam that MCOS administers, in which they have to pass in order to be eligible to actually have a career in law enforcement.
Now, do they have to continually be, uh, recertified, if you will, like nurses would and other professions? Is this something that, that they do yearly or every other year?
There, there is continual learning that happens, yes, uh, annually. And I mean, that could be everything from, um, certifying with firearms qualification, uh, all the way down to, you know, legal updates and law updates. Uh, you know, the good thing about it is that one thing that we do is our police and our corrections academy. But the other thing that we do is our in-service training. So we provide a large amount, uh, of the in-service training that those officers within our region actually take part in annually. That's either online, uh, through, we have an online firearms, uh, class, or, you know, y- you know, on ground. And not only do, we do that for all of those, those agencies, we also, our, our own police, uh, department takes a part in that. And I think it should be noted that we have some very qualified, um, you know, uh, school resource officers that actually teach within our academy, within, uh, our in-service, as well as attend those classes. So, uh, we're very lucky with the quality of SLOs we have even on our campus.
That's good, and I got one more, if that's okay, um.
Yep.
Chair, um, females, are there, um, any, uh, more females as candidates, or they're actively being recruited? I mean, what, what sort of the gender dynamics is that with the, uh, police academy?
Um, so we have increased the number of females, and I think that's largely a part to Joyce's leadership. Um, as well as the diverse pool of students has also increased. And I think that's largely amount to us really partnering with agencies. Uh, and it's, it's a struggle, agencies will tell you, they've said it for years. It continues to be an issue today of having diverse, not only in gender, but also in race. Uh, but we, we have had, over the last couple of years, some of the most diverse, um, academies that we've seen in years. And I think it's a large part to our staff, to our faculty that are teaching, that are also encouraging people, uh, to come. Uh, I did want to follow up, um, I, I did just get a little message. Our job placement rate in the last five years, uh, has increased by twenty percent to your question. And, um, the completion of academy has increased by ten percent. So we have, uh, we have been moving the needle on both completion as well as job placement.
Great, thank you, that's awesome.
Yep.
Any other, uh, questions from the trustees on the police academy?
I have some questions.
Go ahead, Dave.
Um, so Vice President Tucker, can I get a copy of this? Because as I was looking at the slides, I was writing down some notes that are going to be questions, and I, I'd like to just submit some written questions to you that I could get some responses to. But if I could get a copy of the PowerPoint, that would be great. Um, going into the, a breakdown on the gender and racial makeup of the classes, I'm wondering if you said we have forty people incoming to the Fall Academy?
Four, there's forty-two in queue, uh, that number could change, you know.
Get us a breakdown by gender and by race, uh, of, of this upcoming Fall Academy, just as a, uh, momentary snapshot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we offer, what, eight hundred twenty hours of instruction now to complete the academy? Are they required to take all those eight hundred twenty hours?
They are. It is a requirement that they complete the entire, uh, the entire number of hours, yes.
And how, how many weeks does that usually take for that completion?
Eighteen weeks. Eighteen weeks, and we are, uh, the, the, the range, and I felt to mention this, I apologize, the range, uh, is anywhere from fifteen to sixteen weeks up to twenty-two weeks. So each academy, as I mentioned, adds hours in based upon their regional need. And, uh, we, when we first started, we were at twenty-one, and people were not coming to us because we were one of the longest academies. And what we've done is really worked in the last three and a half years with our advisory board to get us to a number that still has what our agencies are saying that needs to be taught, but is not as long, and that, so eighteen is, is probably the lowest that we would ever go at this point.
Um, in addition to the PowerPoint on this, could I get a, uh, li- 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 list of the entire curriculum? Like what the classes are exactly?
Yep, so, so inside of this PowerPoint, Trustee Devardy, uh, and it was, it was small, but on the PowerPoint, you'll be able to see it.
It went by quickly, I was starting to take notes and it was gone.
Yep, we can get you that.
Um, the tra- our instructors, are they full-time or part-time?
Our instructors are part-time, they're all part-time.
And are they? Do, are, do they all come from law enforcement backgrounds? I, actually, I'd like to get the background or training of our, not by name necessarily, um, of all of our instructors. So, uh, here are our instructors, I, what I'm looking for are instructors that have backgrounds in, um, dealing with So, uh, here are our instructors. I, what I'm looking for are instructors that have backgrounds in, um, dealing with mental health, uh, issues or dealing with, uh, specifically with strategies for de-escalation, maybe from a social work perspective as opposed to a policing perspective. And I'm wondering if, I, I'd just like to see what we have in terms of our instructors to see what kind of backgrounds our instructors are bringing to the training programs.
So i- 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 if I may, would it be helpful, you're talking about it, those specialized areas?
No.
There's 90, there, there's 96 roughly, give or take, part-time instructors.
Okay.
But, but some of those are teaching, um, um, you know, EVO, emergency vehicle operations, how to stop the car. And those might be teaching two or four hours and those are, are, you know, um, what we call, you know, more training versus actual classroom instruction.
Right, I got.
Classroom, you know, those, those kind of de-escalation, mental health, officer, um, you know, well-being, self-care, those are more specialized. We probably can get you a list of those.
Um, I, if we, if we have 96 instructors, can't we just say, you know, this person, this instructor has uh, 20 years of law enforcement experience? That's his background. That's what the expertise they bring. This person has, uh, training, uh, in mental health field and, and policing. Or, you know, like, it would be nice to just get, I mean, we have resumes on all of them. We could black out the names and I could see what backgrounds they have without attaching names to. I don't want to get at personnel records where I'm looking at what pe-
We don't need that.
I, I want to see what training we have, what, what backgrounds our trainers have.
So.
I'd like to make a statement. This is Trustee McKnight Morton and, and I hear what-
I mean, I could put all these private requests.
But, no. What I would like to say is, um, if it's possible that, um, that if anyone else is interested in any of this information, other than this, uh, what we just heard, this, uh, presentation, then they need to say that. Uh, for one person, we've gone through this before. For one person to request something like that just for them, it really eliminates the rest of the board because we're all listening to the same thing. Now, as what you're asking, I think, um, that's something that should be directed to the President, not to the Vice President. Even though he's in charge of the program, I think that it should be directed to the President if this is a possibility. Not that you want it. That's what I'm saying.
Direct it to the President.
Okay, um, if I may, um, President Blanca, could we just get like a really super general thumbnail on like, half of them have this experience, 25% of them have this experience, like, just keep it really super general?
I won't get at it. No. And I'll put it, I have written requests to President Blanca.
Okay, um, you know.
I think this is probably pretty easy to see. And I, I view what I'm, I view my interest in this as a, as coming from a policy perspective. Not, I'm not trying to get down in the weeds and do, and say, and micromanage, but I want to broad, look, to look at it as a broad policy perspective to see how much of our training is strictly coming from, uh, long-term law enforcement and how much is coming from other areas of expertise. And I, it's totally relevant as a policy matter for, for this to be looked at. And I'll direct questions to the President.
Um,
i- i-
I need to respectfully, I'd like to do whatever the board wants. I'm not sure how big this is.
Okay, how about?
You know, I, I do whatever. I mean, if that's, I, I don't get, maybe when you talk to me, David, I'll have a better understanding. Because it seems like a lot to go through 90 people and write down all the training they have. And, um, and I think that's to give you a comfort level, which I respect. Um, but I don't see how that relates to policy. But I think that gives you a comfort level and I respect that you need that comfort level. Um, you, John?
I mean, if-
If the board was to-
I do, I just want to say, I found, uh, time and time again, that you've been very responsive to my inter- my inquiries. Um, I highly respect your responsiveness and, you know, we can just talk and-
Let's talk.
Work out what, what, work out what the appropriate level of information is. And I, I respect your judgment on that.
Yeah, let's talk about it. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, any other trustees have a question?
I saw Ruth's box light up.
Yeah, my, um, I'm, I no longer connected to the meeting visually, but I'm on the phone. Um, I think it's very important for us to know the background of those instructors. Um, uh, because we're responsible as trustees for, um, supervise, or for, uh, uh, offering this training to police. And it seems that in the current environment, the training of police is very, very important. Um, and if they're trained, uh, by the good old boys who've been there forever, um, that's a different thing than if they have some training with, uh, social workers or mental health workers or, um, uh, more modern policing methods. And I, I know that David, um, and neither David nor I are trying to i- impugn the program with this, but we have a responsibility to know that we are training police in a progressive, humanistic way. And the only way we could do that, or at least one way we can do that, is to look at the qualification of the instructors. And I think it's very important.
Okay, thank you, Ruth. Um, President Blanca, I'm gonna trust you on this one. You know, I don't, you know, I don't-
Trust me on all of them.
Okay, I, I don't want to, you know, invade anybody's privacy. I don't want to, um,
Right.
You know, cross any line that shouldn't be crossed, but there may be just a general community interest in just kind of knowing what the background is. I don't-
I understand. We'll figure, I'll figure something out with Dave.
Okay, thank you. I don't want it to be hard. I don't want it to be hard at all.
No, I understand. We'll figure something out.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
McKnight Morton. And, um, what I said to Trustee D'Varity is not that I don't want to know. I think we all need to know. That's all I'm saying. Well, what I am saying is this. I think when, when a question is asked of an individual who's doing the presentation, if there's certain things that, that you would like presented in a way so that the board is involved in this, not just one individual. That's all I'm saying. And, and this type of instance or other instances, that it needs to be presented to the President because she is, uh, over these programs. And she's the one can help with this information versus the Vice President's. I hope I made myself clear. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, yep, thank you. Any other questions on the Police Academy topic? Okay, thank you, everybody.
Ruth's lighting up. Ruth lit up.
Oh, Ruth, did you have another question?
No, I don't know why I lit up.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just making sure. Thank you. Um, okay, we're gonna go on to the Public Safety Update. VP Blakely, are you ready?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you for having me today. Um, I'm going to provide an update on our Public Safety Department. Do I have control? Yes, thank you. So the mission of our, the Department of Public Safety is to create a safe, welcoming and inclusive community. We will ensure the protection of each person's constitutional rights and that all people are treated with equality, respect and compassion that they, and they focus on, so that they may focus on their educational development. The Department and all employees are also committed to supporting the overarching institutional mission of the college. So the values of our Public Safety Department are based on pride, professionalism, respect, integrity, dedication and excellence. So the vision and philosophy, um, if you remember, we had, you know, many years of conversations about whether to have um, a police department of our own, but we want to provide safety and service to our campus community. Um, our partnerships will foster trust, mutual respect and cooperation with all members of the community. And most important, we're going to be integrated into the culture of the college and a resource for everyone. So I think that culture of the college, and that was one of the main reasons we decided to have our own department, is so that we would have our own officers. So the importance of our own officers on campus, we control the hiring and the training of our officers. They're integrated, as I indicated, into our campus culture. And it allows whenever possible for, if there's criminal activity, for us to handle it through the student conduct process rather than the criminal court process, which we're able to do because it's our own officers. So for community policing, our officers are visible and they're integrated on our campus. They know our faculty, our staff and our students. They're approachable and they provide support. We chose officers with years of experience in community policing. It was very important for us. We went through a lot of applicants to find those that were a good fit. I mean, we focus on support rather than enforcement. So here's some ideas. Here's some indication of our officers at Welcome Day, which they always participate in. Our staffing, we have, um, Scott Hilden, who's our chief. We have Matthew Lidge, who's our deputy chief, and our campus resource officers. And we all met these at, uh, a prior meeting, Cameron Bauer, John Elkins, Paul Gomez and Jeffy Shoemaker. Our Public Safety Department is also, we have non-sworn, we have full and part-time public safety patrollers that are non-sworn. We have full and part-time dispatchers because we're open 365 days a year, 24/7. And we also have a full-time security and fire alarm person that's in public safety for all of the door access and safety alarms. So for our sworn officer hiring, um, the five officers that were hired once we decided to have our own, um, police department, um, we went through extensive interviews and background checks. There was psychological testing done prior to hire. Our officers have over 120 years of community policing experience. And 40% of our officers that were hired are minority. There's another indication of our officers, um, participating in Welcome Day on campus. There's a presence at our, a community event. So our training is proactive. It's not reactive. Um, all our officers came with years of training, but we've done, as soon as we set up the force, we had training in anti-bias and implicit bias. And as Brandon noted, they took training, they had training through our Police Academy, through our in-service sessions, but they've also attended just our regular campus in-service training as well. They've done diversity and inclusion, the de-escalation techniques, including verbal judo, mental health training, our ethics, emotionally dealing with emotionally disturbed individuals, excited delirium, community policing. And again, our officers bring years of training and years of experience in community policing. Less lethal force training, um, use of pepper spray and taser. And we've also been able to access the Milo Training System for Scenario Training, as Brandon noted. So the activities we've done on campus since we've established the force, we have the Clemm's system, which is the Court and Law Enforcement Management System, which is used throughout southeastern Michigan. The 800 megahertz radios that we talked about, because of Washtenaw County Public Safety Millage, we were able to get those radios for our officers. We provide, our officers provide active, Alice Active Shooter Response Training, that's provided to sta- faculty and staff during our in-service sessions. We've also done sa- general safety sessions for our students. Um, that included Alice. But we also did, um, awareness of edibles. Um, when the marijuana laws changed in Michigan, we certainly saw an uptick of students bringing edibles to campus. And so making students aware of being careful what to eat once that law changed. Um, we've also had active, um, online active shooter and classroom lockdown training required for our employees. And we've worked with our student development and activities to, um, launch Coffee with a Cop sessions. Those are noted here. So other activities we have, we've launched this last year, we launched a, uh, app called WCC Safe. Uh, it provides safety information and alerts. It also allows faculty and staff to contact public safety via text messages. Especially if there was an emergency in a classroom. People may not feel comfortable using their phone or picking up the cop, the classroom phone, but they can text if there's an emergency occurring. We've also implemented a distributed antenna system that you approved earlier to amplify the strength of those radios, since those radios are used by first responders across the state. We've also moved to establish a, a community emergency response team on our campus. Um, CERT is volunteers. We have, uh, 25 WCC staff who volunteered to be part of our CERT team. It required over 21 hours of training. It educates volunteers about disaster preparedness and hazards that may occur in our area. Um, the training included disaster response skills, fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization and disaster medical operations. So we're very proud that we now have an established CERT team on our campus. There talks about the special training that they, um, had. And they also attend two-hour sessions quarterly. We've also had activities with our community county partners. Um, we hosted earlier this year an active threat tabletop exercise that included eight local law enforcement partners, including the FBI and the state police. We also had St. Joe's Hospital and Huron Valley Ambulance as part of that, um, tabletop. We've purchased, um, and sta- and trained our staff on emergency, using emergency medical tourniquets and quick clot products. So again, if we needed to do a response to a mass casualty event. And we also have had our staff participate in countywide active threat trainings. We have our staff participate in countywide Detective Bureau meetings. Um, Chief Hilden has been chosen as the vice chairperson at the Washtenaw County Criminal Justice Association. And our campus resource officers participated in the annual Shop With a Hero event for a local family to provide gifts for the holidays. Cameron Bauer and that event. I think it's really important to note that, um, our officers, um, are a core part of our WCC care team. Our care team, um, adheres to core values of integrity, community, social justice, respect and responsibility. We deeply care about the health, well-being, safety and success of our students and employees. And, um, that's why we've created the WCC Care Team, which is our behavioral intervention team. We're designed to intervene early and provide support to our students who may be displaying emotional or distressed behaviors. Our team utilizes a proactive and multidisciplinary approach in support of the safety, health and well-being of all of our campus. We're comprised of licensed professional counselors, our three public safety officers and student services administrators. I think it's important to note that we, our officers provide wellness checks. So if we have students who have indicated harm to self and if we're not able to determine the status of those students, our officers provide wellness checks and coordinate those wellness checks when needed on lo- with law, lo- local law enforcement agencies.
Linda?
Yes?
Could you explain what a wellness check is?
Yes. So wellness check, we may get a report from, you know, we have our, uh, reported concern. We also introduced a care form this year. And so faculty may, um, indicate that, uh, a student submitted either an assignment with some concerning remarks or an email that they're corresponding, or they may just have, um, you know, the student has made some, um, concerning remarks. And so we will do outreach to those students. Um, if we have an indication that they may be, um, indicating they may be harming themselves or want to harm themselves, if we can't good, get a good response from them, then we do a wellness check. And so an officer goes to the student's home and determines that they are safe. Um, we've also sometimes had to go to a, um, an individual's home and some, in some cases, transport them to the hospital because they were indicating they were going to harm themselves. And we get them to a hospital so that they can be, um, taken care of. So for accreditation, um, their ICLIA is the International Association of Campus Law Enforcement Administrators. Um, and we are in the process of, um, going through the accreditation process for our agency. Um, and if we are able to get accreditation, which I am totally confident because, that we will, we'll be the first higher education institution in Michigan to have an accredited law enforcement agency. I also want to note that, you know, during the entire pandemic, um, our officers and public safety staff have been on campus 24/7. Um, and so, and as, as we've expanded our health screening, those are the individuals that are taking care of that. And so, and as we've expanded our health screening, those are the individuals that are taking care of that. I would like to acknowledge their work during the crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do any trustees have questions on our public safety program?
Yes, McKnight Morton here.
Go ahead, Diana.
As I say that, congratulations to Linda and her team and acquiring the accreditation. And I think.
We haven't got it yet. We're working.
But you know what? It sounds good to me. So I'm gonna say it right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more thing.
Yeah.
Okay. I know when I talk, I lean forward. I, I push my iPad back. And I still lean forward. So if I lean forward, just, I just lean forward. I'm sorry. I apologize. So my daughter has already told me a thousand times not to lean forward. And I still do. So go ahead and laugh. Because I'm laughing and Angela is laughing too. Thank you very much.
Okay. You lean all you want, Diana. Do any other trustees?
I do just have one quick question.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, yes, ask another. Wait, hold on, hold on. Hello? Okay, no feedback. This is to VP Blakey. It's awesome to hear about the accreditation. Now, how soon will we hear? Is it still a little bit more that we need to go through to get the final Ts crossed and the Is dotted to actually be confirmed?
Yes. So there will be a process, you know, there's, you know, like 700 processes we have to have in place. We've already started working on that. But once you apply, you'll have to actually have a campus visit by an accreditation to get that process. So I expect it'll be, you know, a year to 18 months because it's not something you can instantly apply. There's a bunch of, a lot of documentation that we'll submit to the A. But we are well on our way to having it completed.
Awesome. Great. That's wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Any other trustees have questions on public safety here?
This is Ruth Hatcher. Can you hear me?
Ruth and then Dave. Okay, go ahead, Ruth.
Yeah, since I can't see the presentation and the PowerPoint, could I have maybe via email or sale mail, the PowerPoint presentation on the, the training for our police and what training they've been through?
Of course.
I can't see it, so I'd like to have a copy of it somehow, Linda.
Okay.
And also, Linda, thanks for returning my call last week. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Dave.
Simple question. I, first of all, I'm happy that the, our public safety officers are getting like first responder training and applying tourniquets and the like. Are they carrying Narcan in case they, at this point, assuming they are at this point?
Yes, they are, yes.
And then as part of the training, it wasn't called out separately. Do they have some sort of background training in how to deal with issues that arise out of substance abuse situations?
Yes.
Or is that not dealt with?
Yes.
Okay. That's adequate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other trustees have a question? Okay, thank you. These were a really great set of reports. We're gonna go on to tab B. The personnel recommendations. Okay, where am I? The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the monthly personnel recommendations as listed. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second?
Davis, support.
Thank you. Any discussion on the personnel recommendations?
It's Ruth Hatcher. I just noted that there are 25 reduction in personnel. Is this a result of the reduction in force that we talked about last, last month? These people have a variety of between two and, and 30 years' experience.
I'll, I'll speak to that. This is a combination of resignation, retirement, and position elimination. Not all from the reduction of force that we had talked about. It also involves a grant elimination. So there are a couple, several employees actually, whose position was eliminated due to that grant elimination as well.
Okay, thank, thank you. And, and when these people are leaving the college, do we thank them or help them with their next steps? That kind of thing, because I, I'm not sure we've seen 25 before leaving.
We've done a variety. We obviously have an exit process that we go through. In some cases, there is additional assistance provided with career transition as well.
Great, thank you. And thank you for the org charts. I appreciate that.
Well.
McKnight Morton here. I just would like to, well, say, kind of, I guess, congratulate the ones who are retiring. I didn't write their names down, but with 15, 20, 33 years and more, I think that they have served the, our institution very well and has stayed with us for a long time. And I just want to say kudos to them in their retirement or whatever it is. But the ones who are, are, have been with us the longest, I want to say thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Any other trustees have comments on the personnel? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Going to tab C. Tab C, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees extend the appointment of Dr. Rose B. Blanca as president and chief executive officer to June 30th, 2023, and that the Chair of the Board of Trustees be authorized to sign a contract with Dr. Blanca on behalf of the board. Do I hear a motion?
Milliken, so moves.
A second?
DeVarty, seconds.
Okay. Any discussion on tab C? Okay. Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Next is tab D. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a 1.5 adjustment to the independent staff salary and, and wage rates for the 2020-21 fiscal year. Do I hear a motion?
DeVarty, move. DeVarty, seconds.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the salary adjustment?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is tab D, right?
Yes, tab D.
That's the support staff workers?
Yeah.
No.
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 Oh, okay.
These are independents.
Okay, fine. Then my question is on the next one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on this tab D? Okay. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Looking at tab E now. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2020-21 part-time support staff and club sports coaches wage rates as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Davis, so move.
Okay, heard Davis and then Hatcher. Are you seconding?
Second, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on tab E?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Are we, I'm, not, not so much the salary. Are we actually having club sports going with coaches with the pandemic? Is, these are like contact activities?
I don't know.
So, sorry, this is EVP Blakey. If we will, we, we may not be able to, based, we may be able to do some of these in winter. We still put these in place just in case we're able to have any sports.
Okay, thank you.
Just because, sorry, just because you're approving this doesn't mean that they're necessarily, they'll only get paid if we're actually going to run a team sport.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Is she still with us?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
She's muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Looking at tab F now. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2020-21 part-time faculty wage rates as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on tab F? Okay. Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Looking at tab G now. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2020-21 Faculty Department Chair Appointments as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So move, Hatcher.
Second?
DeVarty, second.
Thank you. Any discussion on tab G?
It's Hatcher. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ruth.
Are there any new chairs or are these mainly continuing chairs?
Trustee Hatcher, there actually are, there are some new chairs and some transitions. But there, there are some that are staying on that have been more of our senior chairs that, that'll be there to mentor others.
That's right. And were there any controversies about elected chairs that were not acceptable to the administration?
Nope, not at all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on tab G? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Looking at tab H now. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for May 2020 as follows. General Fund, Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule of Investments, All Funds. Do I hear a motion?
Hatcher, so move.
Okay, second?
DeVarty, second.
Okay. VP Johnson, would you like to add anything here for us?
Yes, please. Thanks, Chair Fleming.
Go ahead.
If we could go to page two, please, in the document. Next page in, there it is. So just a couple of key, key trends that I wanted to point out for the board. Once again, revenue is running in many areas below, low budget, specifically tuition and fee revenue. And that's, and that was anticipated. And then property taxes is running slightly above budget. And we anticipate that, that trend to continue along with state appropriations. And state appropriations really is, is, is two pieces. One is the makeup money for local community state stabilization. The makeup for personal property tax is a little bit better than budget, along with the funding for the higher pension plan costs, which we didn't anticipate at the levels that we had originally budgeted is helping. I'd point out for the board in the narrative that, that we still fully anticipate a strong possibility that we will not receive the full base state aid budget amount. Of course, the state is still trying to resolve their budget issues, both for the current fiscal year and, and for next year. So we, we think there's a strong likelihood that state appropriations line could go negative by year end. And, and our revised budget for this year and all the cost containment measures we put in place were to help to, to offset those anticipated impacts. On, on the cost side, speaking of cost containment measures, so you will see on total expenditures that were actually below budget, about 2.6 million. That was fully anticipated. You know, when the college went into remote operations, we strongly slowed down the, the spending for direct expenditures or non-personnel expenditures, along with the, the impact of reduction of hours for part-time staff after we had completed our winter semester. So, so we're about 2.6 million to the good on expenditures. And that's an important set of resources that will help to offset the anticipated revenue reductions that we're going to receive most likely from both the state aid cuts along, along with the spring revenue enrollment, which is about on plan. But one of the ways that we got there was through providing very generous payment plans for our students. And we're seeing a rising level of accounts receivable for some of our students that we think will be a write-off in, in the end. The other thing I'll point out for the board, if we could go to page four, a couple pages back, please. The Deferred Maintenance Schedule. We've taken the opportunity, Craig Whipstock and the Facilities Team has taken the opportunity, since we've put in certain projects that were related not to safety and reliability, but to upgrades, we've put those on the pause button and we've reallocated the funds to things that, that were critical for safety and reliability. And so you will see some new, some, some new projects on, on this list that relate to elevators and relate to the dredging of our ML, of our ML retention pond, which are, are, are critical things that we need to provide some funding for, especially in light of the fact that we're proposing in next year's budget, a lower level of deferred maintenance. But you will see that we have a, we a fully utilized and balanced Deferred Maintenance Fund. And that's my highlights.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for VP Johnson?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Is there federal CARES Act money for relation to the pandemic that's reflected in some of these line items? Or are we anticipating anything this fiscal year?
We are, Trustee, Trustee DeVarty, we are, but it's, it is not yet, not yet reflected. Those are restricted funds. So what'll happen is there are certain expenditures that are starting to be reflected in our actuals for this year, that we actually will move into the restricted fund once we get clarity from the Department of Education that they're eligible for reimbursement.
And will that show in our, this fiscal year? Do you anticipate or in next fiscal year?
I think it really depends on whether or not that the DOE provides that guidance. They, they, they know they need to provide additional guidance. And so I, I believe it could be one of these year-end accruals that we book late in August prior to fin, to finalizing the fiscal '20 results.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ruth.
In your narrative on page one, you mentioned online and virtual.
classrooms and I did, what's the definition and difference between online and virtual?
Sure, so for online, that is the traditional synchronous course that we offer that, you know, students can study at their own pace with no assigned times. The virtual was the new form of distance learning classroom that is tied to some assigned times of class participation and then some self-study.
Okay, and we are currently doing both?
Yes, we offered that in a limited fashion for spring, summer. And there are more offerings of that being put on the schedule for this coming fall.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for VP Johnson?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milligan.
Milligan, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. We are now on tab I, the Facilities Development Report. VP Johnson, would you like to give us any highlights here?
Just a couple. Actually, item one, we are pleased to announce that the Energy Center cooling tower replacement that we were able to get the firm in from Oklahoma and get all our issues resolved. And the campus is being cooled as we speak. Been appreciated as I've been on campus, we're working on reopening plans, so that's up and running. You will note that we are hard at work while the Fitness Center is in shutdown mode. We are trying to get some critical projects going. Two that are key is items eight and nine, the pool resurfacing. That we, that the contractors actually started that work. It takes time to drain the pool, that's been drained and they're starting their work there. And the hot tub, they have started the demolition of the men's hot tub as well. So that's ongoing. We've also taken the opportunity to do other work that is difficult to do during when the campus is open, so a lot of concrete repair. In Lot Six, we had a lighting issue, so we needed to to rewire certain lighting fixtures in the park. The parking lots, we've done that work. Craig Whipstock and his work have also done a great job of taking this opportunity to continue to pursue energy conservation projects. So we've done a lot of lighting replacement throughout the buildings as well. The other thing that I'll mention is under the bottom of page two, item one, the SEMCOG pathway. If you happen to drive by campus, you will see that the pathway is done. It is beautiful. And we're currently working on some landscape restoration for that project. So that was a wonderful outcome.
Thanks. Any questions on facilities development?
Yes.
Yes, this is McKnight Morton. Well, the first thing I want to say, congratulations in getting the non-motorized pathway completed. I'm really pleased with that. Thank you so much. But my other question, or question, is item 20. The IR roof survey. And it says June start. What is that?
So that is, so one of the things that Craig Whipstock brought was a lot of specialties around understanding the current conditioning of our building systems, one of them being roofs. So we've had a lot of difficulties with minor and sometimes more major roof leaks across campus. So Craig ordered that we do an infrared, that's it, I had to think of the word, infrared roof survey. So we're actually doing an X-ray, a kind of a heat map of our roofs so that we can see where all the key leaks are. And so he is doing that work as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did somebody else have a question on facilities?
Yes.
Go ahead.
VP Johnson, tell us again why an Oklahoma firm had a corner on our cooling tower work?
It's, the name of the firm is Tech Towers. And the control system that we used was a state-of-the-art control system. I mean, it's been in existence for a number of years, but this particular firm really is one of the leaders. And so under the general contractor, which was Eckert Mechanical. So they had subcontracted out to Tech Towers as being the key lead firm for these control systems, which among other things are really strong in energy conservation. We went from two cooling towers to three cooling towers. It allows us to be able to do the maintenance we need to do and also run all two or three cooling towers at lower capacity and save a lot of energy. There's a lot of control systems that come with that energy conservation that Tech Tower was a specialist in.
So we got world-class service. That's great.
Thank you. Any other questions on facilities? All right, thank you. Moving on to the remarks of the Board of Trustees. Do any trustees want to make remarks?
I do. This is McKnight Morton.
Hang on, I hear Ruth and I hear Diana.
Which one?
Okay, we'll let Diana go first and then Ruth second, okay?
Okay, thank you. And I promise I won't get up in front. Couple of things is on my mind is I mentioned earlier about the two deceased people that one that worked at the college, Dennis Beela. I remember when I first started at the college in 1994, I met Dennis. At that time, we had to go around and meet everybody. And Dennis throughout, and I was on the negotiating team at that time because I had, through my experience at the county, I was on the negotiating team. So I had background experience with that. And Dennis, even in our negotiations, was always very, very polite. He listened to everybody on both sides. And he gave very good responses and we would take that. He would always accept any types of ideas that anyone would have or how we can come. I'll never forget, one of the things in that, one of our negotiations, and this was at that time with Dr. Gundermeyer. He said, "I want this to be a win-win situation." And it worked out. And we both, when we left out of this room together, all of us, it was, everyone was shaking hands. Everyone was very, very cordial to each other. And it turned out to be a very good meetings that we had with him. I just want to give my condolences to the family and his friends, especially colleagues. Ruth, you were part of a lot of Dennis Beela's favorite people, I would like to say, maybe I shouldn't say that. But he liked you a lot and I really appreciate his service to the college and I'm very sad to hear his passing. Now, Bill Davis. Bill Davis was on the board when I came. And he was very, very knowledgeable about a lot of things because he was an entrepreneur. He and his wife both, Judith and him, had owned businesses for many years and then he developed, got this company. And he was very knowledgeable about a lot of things in entrepreneurship and how people could, you know, make money from their own, running their own business. He was very instrumental. Because he and a few other board members, along with myself, went through the process of developing the Washington Community College Technical College. And it was difficult, but we went through it. And at that time, it was a lot of difficulty trying to get it together, but also difficult because the neighboring school districts didn't understand the concept and did not want to participate. So our board worked together as one board to make this happen. We worked hard on getting this technical college developed and up and running. So I just want to give my condolences out to Judith Davis. She was a wonderful person and I know she was a good wife and they contributed to the college. And Bill went on to the WTMC Board of Directors. And I just want to say, he really, he did a lot in his tenure as a board trustee. Now, my next thing, I just want to I just want to say that I remember reading the packet and one of the things is said that was about student strategies. And I really hadn't, I wasn't quite sure because I saw different scenarios about student strategy and I hadn't heard that. And so I'm not sure how that's going to work out, so I'd like to hear more about that. And my other thing is that I would like to hear more about how the how the college with the streamlining of the personnel would affect the operations of the college. So I would, those are just two things I would like to hear and I'm putting it out on board, I mean, out here for it to be discussed. If we get to that point. And another thing is about the CARES Act and the 880 million. From my meeting on Friday, telephone call with the Board of Directors of the MCCA. What we had found out, Mike Hansen and Aaron Shore had found out that as far as the 880 million that's supposed to be coming, they still, the state still doesn't know how they're going to divide it up. Unless Bill Johnson has a little bit more insight than I do from what I heard on Friday. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I want to add something about our NASA scholars.
Hang on, hang on, Bill. I'm sorry, Ruth was second and then you can be third. Thank you.
I have two thank yous for HR. One for the org charts that I, you know, love. And also for their help for Sally Beela. She did not know much about the family finances. And I asked her how that could possibly be with, she called me Tuesday morning because Dennis was so careful and she said, "Maybe it has something to do with the fact that I didn't want to talk about it." So HR was very responsive to her and helping her get things settled. Two brief stories and also thank you to the, to Rosa's office for their kind words that they sent out to the community. Two brief stories about Dennis. My first negotiation with Dennis, you can imagine I was very nervous and taking copious notes about what everybody said. And Dennis was writing as well. And in one of the breaks, I asked Dennis about his notes. And when I looked at his notes, they weren't notes, he was doing math problems. That's how he listened, was by doing math problems. When Sally called me Tuesday morning to tell me that Dennis had gone, one of the things he was very concerned about was to let the math department know that he would not be teaching in the fall. He taught every semester and was scheduled to teach in this fall and that was one of his major concerns as he was dying at U of M Hospital. So yes, we were very close and I want to thank Rosa's office and HR for their help to that family. I'm also grateful for the work that Bill Johnson has done and others have done in the midst of all the decline in enrollment and finances that we're able to provide for salary adjustments. They're modest, but in these times, they are quite generous. And I congratulate the office for being able to do that for the employees that are here at the college. Thanks.
Thank you, Ruth. Okay, Bill, you go.
Our NASA scholars that we heard about earlier, Emily and Maximilian, very exciting opportunity. When I was in Washington DC, I worked for NASA. That environment is very stimulating. And they're going to walk in there with their eyes wide open. And when we see them again, they're going to infect everybody around them with the enthusiasm and the stimulation that they got at NASA. Happy for them.
Thank you. It's exciting. Do other trustees have comments?
I just have a quick one.
Go ahead, Angela.
All right, just one moment to make sure I have feedbacks down. All right. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay. I was reading through, and I can, forgive me because I forgot the young man's name. I believe his name is Khalid. He's the one that received one of the scholarships for Full Ride. Forgive me, I'm kind of running on a little bit of memory here, but he and I used to work together at TJ Maxx. And I'm really proud of him and I wanted to give his name a lot of recognition because he does work hard. He's very passionate in what he is wanting to accomplish in his career. And I wanted to say, he couldn't have gotten a better education anywhere else and I'm happy that he chose WCC. And forgive me, I cannot remember his last name. His first name was Khalid, so just wanted to say, keep your eyes out on him because he definitely has a shining star ahead of him in his life.
Definitely. Thank you. Are there any other board comments? Okay, I'd like to just say a couple of things because of all that is happening in our world right now and all that we have to deal with as a campus. One, we are still in the middle of a global pandemic. And if there's anything I know for a fact, it is, one, the sun rises in the east, that is a fact. And two, there is currently no vaccine for this virus. That is a fact. And it is that knowledge that guides me when I'm making choices and decisions or giving advice or recommendations to the president. I think it's important that we act on facts and what the public health officials and doctors know. And I applaud the administration for how quickly they locked down the campus, how quickly they were able to retool our entire system for distance learning. And I just want to say I'm very proud of all that this administration and teachers and staff has accomplished throughout this time. We still have a long way to go. And we will get there. The second thing I would like to address is the civil unrest and social issues that we're dealing with. We heard two really great reports today. Reports that just, I almost cried listening to them. Very, very early on in my childhood, I can remember seeing police brutality and beatings. When I was 16, I saw the Rodney King assault on TV. It was replayed over and over so many times. And before Rodney King, there were many others. These things were very formative to me in my early adolescence. And I carry that with me when I make choices and decisions. Early on in my tenure here as a trustee, gosh, I think it was maybe five years ago now, right about the time when Mr. Tucker was starting these initiatives to improve our diversity program. I don't know if you remember. I don't know if you remember, but a few years ago, our diversity program was really just putting on cultural shows. When I think of how much, when I think of how far we have come to respond to diversity issues, especially on race, I, I'm very proud to have stood here in support of this, of this school and this administration to make those changes. I believe in our community policing program. I stand by my choice to support it and I believe in the work that Chief Hilden is doing. I believe in the expertise that he brought to our little micro community. And I still stand in support of it. It happens to be the new buzzword now, community policing. And we as a team and as a micro community already have done it and we've been there and we are at the cutting edge. And I am proud, so proud of everybody, just everybody. And that's what I would like to say about the two big issues facing us today. Do any other board members wish to make a comment? If not, I will move on to President Blanca. Are you ready? You're muted. You're muted, President Blanca. Thank you. Go ahead when you're ready.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the trustees for your comments. I really gave my comments in the beginning of the presentation today. And I, I really, you know, I'm looking forward to the meetings that we're going to have to share the pandemic and the different phases of, of opening the college. And I, I plan on giving a public announcement, making a public announcement next week. But I just want everyone to really realize we are going to definitely err on the side of caution. And through this whole process, as we start bringing people back to campus, we never know, things might change along the way. So this is an evolving pandemic. The responses are evolving. So sometimes the decisions that we make today in three weeks may be the wrong ones. We might have to come back and revisit those suggestions. So I guess the sign of good leadership at a time like this is flexibility and weighing all the alternatives as we move forward. So I want to thank the board for your assistance and I look forward to talking to you. Thank you.
Thank you, President Blanca. Okay, we're moving on to Tab J under Old Business. Let's see. I would like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda and make Tab J an action item. Do I hear a motion?
So moves, Ruth Hatcher.
Okay, second.
Devardy, second.
Okay. Any, well, maybe we should let VP Johnson comment on this. Would you like to tell us some tidbits here?
Great, thank you. So this really, we are bringing this, this motion to the board in reaction and response to the anticipation that a lot of our fall courses are going to be taught in distance learning mode versus to be on campus. And while we're finalizing that, that schedule, we, we, we do believe there's going to be a, a lot more choices for students for distance learning. And when you look at our tuition rates, and that's what this, the motion provides in the discussion section, back in April, the board had approved our tuition rates. And, and you will note that for our in district students, the on-campus rate is about $13 per credit hour lower than the distance learning rate at $108. And that is the only rate category to where the distance learning rate is higher than the on-campus rate. And so the recommendation that we're bringing to the board is that, that we really don't want to, students to have to choose based upon financial consequences. We, we would like for our in district students to take the financial consequence of being forced to take a distance learning course to be at the same rate as if they were taking an on-campus course. And so the motion is, is that we were to revise solely for the fall 2020 semester as we're all hopeful that our course schedule for winter can return back to kind of the normal distribution of on-campus and DL. But for fall 2020, that we would revise the in-district rate down from what is approved at $108, the in-district DL rate down from $108 down to $95. And also there are two other rate categories to which we would make that same amendment. And that is for out-of-district students who have either, either work in district or have property in district. We've always had that, that symmetry between the, those rates being charged for work in district and property district to be the same rates as in district. So we would recommend that we would extend that same rate reduction for fall down to $95 for those rate categories as well.
Okay, thank you. So first, we are voting to make this an actionable item. Are there any questions first on tuition rates?
I'm going to speak in favor of this, but should I wait until we move it to the agenda?
I guess either way, it doesn't matter. You can go ahead and speak to it now if you want.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff for their thoughtful foresight in putting this on our table. It's an anomaly that I noticed and thought about. And I actually have had students, a couple of students call me about this because they won't, they're anticipating not being able to take an in-person course and worried about the additional cost of having to do it in distance learning. I think this is respectful of our taxpayers who are so generous in supporting the college with half of our budget, basically. And it recognizes the situation that we find ourselves in where people who want to do things in person may be forced to do it online. And it acknowledges that and reduces the rate, just as Vice President Johnson said, these are the only categories where the distance learning rates are more expensive than the in-person, on-campus rates. And I think this was very thoughtful of the staff to put this on our table. I strongly support it. I strongly support it and encourage us to move it to the agenda today and to pass it.
Thank you. Any other comments on the tuition adjustment?
I just have one question and maybe we don't know the answer yet. Do we have a sense of how that would impact the budget for next year?
Thank you, Trustee Hatcher. It is, it's based upon last, last fall's distribution of in-district DL versus on-campus. It, it, it would be about $130,000 reduction to tuition revenue.
Well, I think, I'm, I think it's a good idea. I just wondered what the effect would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board questions? Okay, so we're first going to vote to make this an actionable item. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken. Vice Chair Mil-
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary Devardy.
Devardy, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. We're still on Tab J. We now need to pass the motion. The recommendation, excuse me, the recommendation as follows. In recognition that the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic will impact the college's fall 2020 on-campus course offerings and in further consideration of the potential financial impact that this may have on in-district students, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the revision to the distance learning tuition rates for in-district, work-in district and property-in district from 108 per credit hour to 95 per credit hour for the fall 2020 semester. Do I hear a motion to approve?
McKnight Morton, so moves.
And a second?
Devardy, second.
Thank you. Any further discussions on the tuition rates? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary Devardy.
Devardy, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you, everybody. We are now on Tab K. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a three-year contract for internet connectivity with DDoS protection, that's distributed denial of service, from merit for an amount not to exceed $78,000. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Milliken, so moves.
A second?
Secretary, support.
Okay, are there any questions on the internet connectivity upgrade? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary Devardy.
Devardy, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. We are now on Tab L, the general fund operating budget. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2020-21 budget plan as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Davis, so moves.
A second?
Devardy, second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? VP Johnson, do you want to highlight anything here? No? You're muted.
Thank you. This still, this still reflects the level of uncertainty on the revenue side for enrollment and for state aid and some of our ancillary business. And we are presenting a cost structure that still allows us to achieve the strategies of the college and still provide for a balanced budget.
Any questions on the general fund from the board?
I have, I have a comment.
Okay, Ruth, go ahead.
I think now I believe in miracles.
Okay.
I can't hear.
Oh, you can't hear me?
No.
I can hear you, Ruth. You, well, now you're muted. You need to unmute now. Okay, I hear you.
Okay. Did you hear my comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments on the general fund? Okay, thank you. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Davis, yes.
Secretary Devardy.
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, we are now on Tab M. First is the Circle In contract. VP Blakey, would you like to comment here?
Yes, I actually have a PowerPoint presentation for this.
Okay.
Sorry. Do I have control? I know. Sorry. Yeah, this is interesting. So we know that student engagement is a key component of student success. And prior, even prior to COVID-19, the college, we've seen an increasing numbers of students enrolling in online classes. Certainly due to COVID-19, all of our winter 2020 classes had to transition to online mode in March. And ours, as you know, all of our summer classes have transitioned to an online format. And we know that many students like to study in groups. We have college organized study groups for many of our STEM courses and other areas. But the, when you're on campus, there's also lots of student organized study groups across many subject areas. And you'll see them in the library, across the campus. They'll see, be in the lobby of Student Center, studying in groups of two to eight on different subject areas. Not being able to gather and study on campus is, we feel is a barrier to student success. Circle In is an app that we've become aware of. It's easy to use and it's a website where, an app in this website where students can study together online. So whether they're local or, you know, live many distances apart, it allows them to study together. They can seek help from their classmates. They can share class notes. Think about if you went to class and maybe you weren't able to get to class and you can ask a classmate for, hey, can I look at your notes from that particular class? It allows students to do that easily through the app. And they can also get help because tutors are embedded in the app as well. It allows ready access to students who are enrolled in their class sections. So Circle In was a recipient of a 2019 National Science Foundation Innovation Grant titled "The Smart Study Recommendations Engine." It's received additional support through private funding to support the work and measure the improvements in student success. And also make, it's also always doing updates to the tool. Circle In is fully deployed on a select number of campuses, including the ones listed on its graph. So I think I'll just go through a series of slides. The big misunderstanding is that studying does not have to be done in person. When the lecture ends, it doesn't mean that mastery for all students, students sometimes have to go through, back over the lecture, over their notes. Every day after class, students struggle and face difficulties. Sometimes it's awkward to ask a stranger to become a study buddy and it's also painful to admit, I don't get it. Circle In is easy to use and it's where students listen and help their classmates. So they'll never feel alone when struggling after class. Students who reach out and help can earn rewards and it's super easy to connect to, again, the students that are in their class. So it allows students to meet where they are. Are they on campus? They can still use the tool if they're taking a hybrid, a mixed online or on-campus or fully online. It doesn't matter. It allows students to study together no matter what mode the classes are in. So an example is Josh posts a question. He now to classmates can then provide immediate help. Does anyone help, you know, understand practice question number four? Then students, he may be shy to ask that question, but he does it on the app and then other students or tutors can jump in and help. So we also, again, this is an update on the tool since we first looked at it. It embeds the tutors that we have provided through our learning support area through the library and supplemental instructors to help with student issues during appointment downtime. So for faculty, they can see, we can also provide a report on what was the top 20 questions that were issued. So that would give feedback to the instructors. Maybe I didn't cover that topic as well as I thought because there's many students asking questions on that particular area. They also can study the notes. Some students are better note takers than other. So she can review the notes. The notes can be shared by students with other students in their class. So they can, again, see material that they might have missed or not understood as well. There's no inappropriate post. Image detection will find that. It also, only students who are, who are enrolled in the particular section have access to the tool. So because it requires their WCC email to sign in and they have to use the real name. So they can't use kind of a false identity when they're uploading their notes or sharing information with other students. So it allows for inclusive study. They can, it also gives them ideas of, they can search and view what influencers have shared, what study cards they're using or study habits they're using for a particular exam that's coming up. It also displays the students the highest rated study resources by the most helpful classmates. So it doesn't, they don't have to worry about conflicts or commuting. Again, they don't have to worry about being able to come to- about being able to come to campus. They're able to study in groups of one-to-one or in larger issues if they need to. Students can also do study groups on particular topics within the class. And also, we can have TAs, or excuse me, tutors lead specific topic areas if they find the students are struggling on a particular area. So students, for, on institutions that have been using the Circle N tool, they found that 66% of the students experienced an increase in productivity in their classes. 64% report having more confidence in their ability to pass the class. It resulted in 80% better academic performance for the students who use the tool. And 71% of the students recommend Circle N to their classmates. Students can also use Circle N. So we would be integrating Circle N into Blackboard. So all of our classes are in Blackboard. All the classes have a Blackboard shell. And so Circle N would just be embedded into Blackboard. So what can we do with the data once we have it? It gives us a sense of, besides just the grade, we can also see the amount of time that students are studying or using the tool and give us predictions on student success. So the National Science Foundation Grant is also, it's measuring classes where students have high DFW course rates and looking at retention increases for students and institutions that are using this tool. So the Circle N site license is $119,000. Due to the support of private funders and the NSF grant, a $25,000 grant would be provided in year one, resulting in the total cost being $94,000. A $15,000 grant would be provided in year two, dropping the cost down to $104,000. We have determined that the first year of the site license would be covered by our Institutional Care's Grant. Because again, with the classes, most of our classes going into an online format, that's a change in campus operations, which is things that the Institutional Care's Grant will cover. Circle N app, if it's approved, available in all of our courses enrolled in fall 2020. This is a board discussion item. Excuse me, I thought I was presenting at the beginning of the meeting, so ignore that last comment.
Okay.
This is a discussion item. And hopefully, voted on at the July meeting.
Okay. VP Blakey, are you okay with that timeline to get this implemented, if we vote on it in July?
I can make that work. If you'd like to vote on it today, that would be fine also. But I can make the July work. But I would, yes, either way, I will make it work.
Okay. Any questions from the board here?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
So you say the first year is likely to be covered, our part of the cost, by the CARES Act funding. Are we committing to more than one year with this? If we do it?
We would be, I wanted to give you, we've been given the cost for three years.
Right.
We always have, we're not committing to a full three years. We can evaluate on a year-by-year basis for the tool.
So we basically get the chance to evaluate it after the first year and say, oh, this is great, let's keep it, or we could back out if it's not working.
That is correct.
I see no reason to not do it. I think we should definitely do it.
Okay. Any other board comments on this?
Well, yeah. I wish I had that when I was going through school. Wow, how is that it didn't come materialize at that time? But that's a long time ago. But in any case, I think, I agree with my colleague DeVarty that this is an excellent, when I read it, I just like, oh my goodness, this is excellent for our students. And for, because that's all we are supposed to be doing is trying to make sure that they succeed and are successful. So I agree with you that I'd be glad to vote on it today if that's agreeable.
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead, Dave.
I'd like to move to amend the agenda, to move this to an action item.
Okay, do I hear a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to make this an actionable item. Any discussion on making it an actionable item? Any reason not to? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
DeVarty.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
We might have lost her.
Trustee Hatcher.
Ruth, you're muted.
Trustee, Trustee Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Now we need to vote on the motion. So do I hear a motion to pass this?
I move that we accept to pass this.
Okay, second and a second. Any discussion, any further discussion on Circle N?
I, it's Hatcher. This is for one year we're voting.
Correct.
And we, I look forward to a report on how well this liked it, how many used it, and how the faculty liked it this time next year.
Sounds reasonable. Any other board questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
No, wait, wait.
Wait, what?
This rose. I just want to make sure it's for one year. For, I'm just saying, yes, it is. Is this one year bill?
This is, so the contract that we have is a one-year contract with the right to renew for two exceeding years at the prices that EVP Blakey outlined. And so actually, the motion asks for the board to approve the first-year contract with the renewal rights that we have in the contract.
Well, so you're asking for more than one year?
Yes.
You know, I want to make sure the board understands that.
Okay. Is everybody clear on the Circle N contract and what we're voting for? Okay, Vanessa.
Well, Ruth, Ruth's the one who asked the question. I just want to make sure.
There's still an option for not renewing the second and third year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so after the end of one year, they will evaluate it to determine if it's worthwhile.
Right.
Right, so they just have the option of renewing?
Right. It was clear in the description.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with that, Ruth?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
McKnight Morton.
Okay.
My question is, maybe it was said, but I didn't hear it. If we, if we go ahead with this one year with this price, does the price increase for the two and three years? Or this is, that three years is part of this one year?
Does the price change? Can anybody address that?
So as the recommendation outlines, the first year cost would be $94,000. And then it does increase to $104,000 in the second year, and then $119,000 in the third year.
If I may.
So that's what was, you know, in the proposal. So I just wanted to make sure that, I was, I got kind of confused if three years is part of one price, but it's each year's separate crisis, I understand.
Correct, correct.
So if I may, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I am very supportive of this because it, you know, engaging students is critical to their success. I just want to make sure the board understands what they're voting on. That's really important to me, that that's very clear. So that's the only reason I brought that up. Not because I'm not supportive.
Oh, no, definitely. And go ahead, Dave.
I mean, it's clear, the recommendation is clear. It's explicit. It authorizes three years. It says the college administration will base the contract renewal on student use and evaluation of the Circle N app. So it gives us an out if it doesn't work. I trust the administration. This is a very, very small investment in a tremendous opportunity to increase student success. And I can't, I just don't see a reason not to do this. I strongly support it.
Okay.
You're here.
Any other board comments before we vote? Okay, thank you. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you, everybody. We are now on tab N.
Chair Fleming and Morton, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay, we are now on tab N, which is the Campus Elevator Upgrade Project. VP Johnson, would you like to give us any highlights here?
Thank you. So we, one of those critical projects that I mentioned earlier that we needed to find funding for was the control systems on a number of our elevators are just hit the end of life and really need to be updated. And that will enhance the liability of the elevators. And this is an opportune time for us to get after this project in that we don't have our normal presence on campus. We use the U.S. Communities Purchasing Consortium as one venue for looking for service contracts that meet our needs. And Kone was the firm that won that bid through the U.S. Communities Purchasing Consortium. And we're asking the board to approve a contract with Kone for $335,000 to cover the elevator control updates for the BE, SC, LA, and GMM building.
Okay. Any questions for VP Johnson here?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Vice President Johnson, this says it takes five to six months to order the parts. If we moved and accepted this now, could it be done in the fall? When there's likely to be no activity on campus?
We actually, we anticipate so. So what I've written is that we'll have it done within five, five to six months of ordering parts. So yes, so that, so the sooner that we have an approved contract, that we can.
This is another one I see a benefit to. If we're in favor of this, I see a benefit to doing it now to allow us to get this in before winter term. So I would like to move to make this an action item on tonight's agenda.
Okay, is there a second to make this an action item?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on making this an action item? Is anybody, does anybody think it's not a good idea to take action on the elevator upgrade?
No, good thinking.
Good thinking, okay. Okay, so we're gonna vote to approve this as an action item. So Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Muted. Ruth, you're muted.
Yeah, it goes out by itself. Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight, McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. We have now made this an action item. Do I hear a motion to approve the recommendation?
I move we approve this recommendation.
Milliken supports.
Support, okay. Any further discussion on the recommendation? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Secretary DeVarty.
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. We are now on tab O, the Gunderr-Meyron Building HVAC Controls. VP Johnson, do you want to highlight anything here for us?
Yes, thank you. So the campus is largely a Siemens Building Automation Control Campus. One of the main buildings that's not is the Gunderr-Meyron Building. That was chosen many years ago, of course, originally, to put in a Honeywell system. And they've now hit their end of life. And it's going to require some updating. The recommendation is, is that we take this opportunity during this updating process to convert the building automation systems for Gunderr-Meyron Building from the Honeywell system to a Siemens-based system. It is for greater integration. Single paying last, we're now able, once this is done, to be able to in an integrated basis, all of our key buildings, systems, including our HVAC systems. And secondly, it will provide for greater reliability. Many of you might know, we've had an ongoing issue with the HVAC systems in the Gunderr-Meyron Building. Many of those are mechanical in nature, but part of it's related to the control systems itself. So this has been on our deferred maintenance list. And once again, Gunderr-Meyron Building is going to be largely unoccupied for at least a while here, that we're able to get after this project. So the recommendation is that we award a contract with Siemens. And this will be a sole source contract with Siemens, given that Siemens is the only provider of these control systems.
Any questions for VP Johnson?
Yes, VP Johnson, after the installation is complete, then is Siemens the sole maintenance party for the system? Or are there third parties that can maintain it once it's in place?
There are, Trustee Milliken, there are third-party contractors for the mechanical elements of it. But the control systems themselves are proprietary. And it's important that we continue to leverage our ongoing Siemens maintenance contracts with this system as well.
So you're comfortable with the control that they'll exert over us? That's correct?
I am. Once the campus made this decision years ago to be a Siemens-based system, we were getting all the benefits that go with that. But also, as you correctly point out, the risk that you're then largely reliant upon the performance and service of one service provider.
Understood.
Any other questions on this? VP Johnson, are you okay with the timeline on this? If we approve it in July?
I am, yes.
You are? Okay. All right, then we will go on to the next tab. Tab P, the Faculty Sabbaticals. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the requested 2020-21 faculty sabbatical leaves as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve?
McKnight Morton, approve, excuse me, support.
A second, please? Do I hear a second for the faculty?
Marty, support.
Thank you. Okay, any discussions on the Faculty Sabbaticals? Any questions?
McKnight Morton, I, I felt in reading all of their narratives for each one, every, each one has a very valid reason and, and has a supportive documentation of what they are trying to accomplish in their sabbatical. And far as I'm concerned, I think it would be a privilege and a great justice for us to hear each one in what they have done on your time off. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the Faculty Sabbaticals? Okay, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Secretary Devarti.
Devarti, yes.
Trustee Hatcher. Trustee Hatcher. Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton. McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Last but not least, tab Q. Q is the revision to our 2020 schedule of monthly board meetings. Let's see where I'm at. There we are. Okay, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees revise their 2020 schedule of monthly board meetings and begin the July 28th meeting at 1:00 PM. Do I hear a motion to support this?
McKnight Morton, support.
A second, I think I heard a first and a second there. Was that Milliken seconding?
Either way.
Okay. Any discussion on changing the schedule for our meeting? Any questions?
My question, McKnight Morton here, my question is, if we, let me ask you this, this is for July, but we're, so we're going to be looking at what's going to happen in September for, in forward of what days and times and how we're going to meet, campus or virtual?
So if I understand, is your question, have we made a decision yet on September?
No, not yet we made a decision, but it's like, what is it, what does it look like? And I know I'm just supposing that Rose may be talking to us, but what would our board meetings look like beginning in September on for the days and times? Is it going to be in-person or virtual?
We don't.
Me, I.
Go ahead.
I think Dave's got the answer. We don't really know right now. It's up to the governor. And so it's, you know, that's where we're waiting to hear. And so if she continues to say that we shouldn't have online meetings, that we're allowed to do that, it will be online. We might, that might not happen. And we'll just wait and see what she says. And maybe by the end of July, we'll have that answer.
Oh, thank you very much, Dr. Belanca. I'm asking for the, for people who may be listening and may have that question, seeing how we are adjusting our, our board meeting for July. And, you know, just, they may just have that question or thought of what's going to happen in September. So that's why I brought it up.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on changing our schedule for just July? Okay. Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Secretary Devarti.
Devarti, yes.
Trustee Hatcher. Trustee Hatcher. Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, adjournment of the meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Moved, a second?
Second, Devarti, Devarti's second.
Any discussion before we adjourn? All right, hearing none.
We're adjourned.
Oh, thank you, Diana. Okay. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Secretary Devarti.
Devarti, yes.
Trustee Hatcher. Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton. McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.